I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public discussion? Nope. Seeing no public discussion, do I have a motion to approve the agenda minutes dated February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three?
I'll move.
Lacter?
Yeah, I'll second.
Stacker? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Decision, discussion, or review of claims and conservation plans?
But just to that. So, um, asking about the D C, they'd like to add an explanation of what's good opposed to the county. So I guess the best, I mean, the D C information as to what benefit the county received. I don't think that's probably all the claim yet for the back trip.
Nope. Who's the people that are asking?
About time saying, well, see what one. Smother, smother people.
Well, I guess there's quite a lot of meetings and conferences that people go to. I've never had seen anyone else give a presentation on conference they've gone to, except for myself. So I guess wasn't the standard here because we asked, I asked this last time.
What do you mean? We always give, we always give information on the meetings we attend.
Yeah, during board discussion and committee reports, not questioning it.
I know, that's because this is being brought up for the vote to take for it. That's why, that's why they asked me to ask the question. It's like, they like to know what benefit was it to the Sioux County for whatever twelve, fourteen, fifteen hundred dollars.
Well. You want to set through these papers, an inch plus thick? I think we could, I think we could find more than one benefit.
The highlights, I still haven't heard what benefit she feels the counties receiving from that trip.
Well, where do you want me to start?
About two or three of the, the best, the high, the highlights, I guess, tell what, what is Kusuth County going to gain from that? Fourteen, fifteen hundred dollar trip.
Well, for starters, one of the days we had a trip over to Capitol Hill, talked with um, Ernst and Grassley. Grassley was only in there a short period of time. Ernst was in there the whole time. But there were multiple things that were brought up that relate to Kusuth County. Um, one of which I brought up EMS and how the national registry test is so hard for people to pass. And I asked her and her staff to look into that, see if anything could be done. Second, um, major thing that was brought up in that discussion was how, um, drainage districts do suffer from, um, federal government not paying their share of assessments for federal ground, which we have a district in the process of a project right now that we are trying to work with Union Slu on to get some grant money. But at the end of the day, that's it. There's projects all over this county that have impacts of hundreds of thousands of dollars. So to me, I guess it's pretty easy to justify that. And if there's any concerns, you can definitely direct them to me.
Hearing no more discussion. Do I have a motion to?
On that point with the claims, Tammy, did you check to see if that?
Found two claims, um, both for four hundred and some dollars. Is there anything one besides that?
Yeah, there was the one for the actual red, I have already these on the computer, but the one for the actual registration should have been in because it was turned in.
Did you want to?
But.
You want to?
Is there anything different in there from, no, I didn't see anything. Do you want to start signing them, Jack? On the, on the A after we vote?
Steve was up here. Yeah, when I came in, so I did that to ask.
Hey, Brittany, it's Kyle in the boardroom. Um, do you know if you have a claim for me for that, uh, registration for the conference for Naco? I thought I had turned that in with the other ones with the mileage and stuff, but I didn't see it on the list. Okay, sounds good. Thanks. Bye.
It can go in, it can go in in two weeks if he finds it.
Oh, yeah, but it was turned in like four months ago, so.
Oh.
But I guess we'll handle that whenever, I suppose.
Do I have a motion to approve the claims and conservation claims? I'll make that motion. Motion by Lacter. Second by?
Second.
Second by Stacker. Any discussion on the claims? Hearing done. Do a roll call vote, please.
Go ahead.
No.
Watten?
Yes.
Snatcher?
Yes.
Jerks?
I'll say yes. Motion carried, three to one.
I don't got the right date, right?
Got a new standard.
Yeah, we got a new state.
Got a new standard.
So you did, but I got stuck to that the other class you turned in, so I didn't see it.
Okay.
Maybe I have written, like, the other one. Okay, um, okay.
Then you have something else ready?
Next week?
Well, it'll be, we'll do it, we're doing the hammering day because it was we pay, then it'll be.
But it's with that one.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Yeah, sorry.
No problem. Thanks. I just knew it was in there.
Well, thank you for taking.
And if you're on one, we need them back. The thicker one. Could be more consistent and have A and A on the same spot on all of them.
That would be an option.
Instead of reading every time we sign? Keeps us on our toes.
I'm in favor, Ted. Move the papers up on that one.
Set it.
Yeah. You're good.
Yep. Okay. Monthly updates and Veterans Affairs.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I sent an email. Didn't know if you got my handout, but in case, that's something to look at.
I didn't see the email.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Well, that's out of January thirty first, a pretty busy month. Um, as you can see, there had sixty-eight phone calls, eighty-four messages, fifty-nine walk-ins, uh, twenty-five scheduled appointments with two outside the office. Uh, we did one transport and we had five hearing aids repaired. A number of system claims, uh, or system records, eleven hundred and thirty currently in my system. Uh, claims submitted to VA, uh, as of January was forty-two. I just wanted to note that's a thirty percent increase over uh, what I typically do, and it's primarily because of the PACT Act and the changes that are associated with that. Uh, claims ready for decision by VA is eight. Claims under development is also eight. Uh, supplemental claims and appeals, I'm working on two of those. And I had to, uh, VA healthcare enrollment into the healthcare system. As far as training, I completed my required annual HIPAA and PII training for, uh, VA and also suicide prevention training. Uh, registered for our state spring conference coming up in April in Des Moines. Uh, prepping for nationals in June, which is scheduled to be in Wisconsin. And, uh, mentor training with Hamilton County on the seventeenth of February. That was actually last Friday. I went down there and spent the day with them. And did give them some basic fundamental training on office setup, interviews, claims development, submitting the claims and those kinds of things. As well as some Q and A with the new director. Um, working with my commissioners, we're trying to set up a North Iowa Veterans Brief in March in the Bancroft area to kind of put out some veterans centric information to veterans regarding the PACT Act and benefits and healthcare. So still developing that. Uh, Iowa Workforce Development over in Clay County, which includes part of Kusuth County here, uh, is setting up a countywide Veterans Appreciation Day in June at Anita Park in Spencer. So I'm going to take a look at that with Heather Warren, who's developing and putting that together. Uh, also under miscellaneous, just working on developing the PSA and the ads for the commissioner selection. And then a little bit about the Iowa Veteran Trust Fund. Don't know if you're following that at all, but currently that fund is insolvent, does not have any money at this point in time. Uh, normally that's, uh, funded by the Iowa Lottery or these proceeds and part of it. Uh, that money was expended, uh, and then recently I think the governor had allocated an additional four hundred thousand to that account to cover the remaining applications from November to March. And, uh, right now we're waiting to see what one July brings if, if they're gonna, you know, change that process. How much they're going to put in there, if any. So I don't really have the answers on that. Uh, yes. Keeping that in mind, because we use that fund or I've used that fund before to help veterans that have dental issues. Uh, several times. So we've done that where we've got partials and full dentures for veterans that otherwise could not afford it. Uh, repair to replace tires on a vehicle for a veteran that couldn't afford tires. And some mechanical work on another pickup for a veteran. So there's different categories for which that account can be utilized. And I, I had previously utilized this, we'll stick. A couple of highlights on the PACT Act. Right now, as of August of last year, there's been over two hundred and thirteen thousand claims nationwide submitted due to just that act alone. And there's been, uh, nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand veterans that have been screened for toxic exposure. And one of the things that I'm seeing in the database when I go on and review claims, uh, it is a federal law. VA now has to put a a letter or a memo in the record of the veteran indicating, uh, toxic exposure, whether it's through Agent Orange acknowledging that or through, uh, burn pits, those kinds of things. Those memorandums are showing up even in some of the county veterans playing well right now. So they're acknowledging that. Obviously, I'm trying to get the veterans to register for the burn pit registry. That there, there's been some difficulty in doing that. My understanding is VA has went back uh, and is trying to make that process a little bit easier. But there are a number of veterans who have started that process and are halfway through and weren't able to finish it. Part of it is due to some computer issues. But, uh, a couple of other things I just kind of want to briefly touch on. As of January seventeenth of this year, any veteran that's in crisis with respect to suicide can dial nine eight eight and go into a thirty day treatment without even paying their hold VA. Uh, if they're in crisis, they can get that thirty days of residential care. As an outpatient, they can get ninety days. So that's an effort by VA to kind of help curtail some of this twenty-two a day suicide type thing. And that's without registering anything with the veterans in crisis, they can make that call and give it. So that was a positive. Another positive is VA life insurance that's available to VA. Uh, for veterans, they can get up to forty thousand dollars worth of whole life in ten thousand dollar increments. Most veterans, depending on the severity of their, uh, injuries and such from service in many cases on the civilian market, aren't insurable, or if they are, it's increasingly expensive as, as you know, to, to cover those things. So VA has offered that. Uh, there are veterans that I encourage to try and take advantage of that. Um, basically you pay in your policy. Uh, it goes into effect two years and one day for full coverage amount. So if something happens to that prior to that, they would get paid back the premiums they paid in plus interest. Other than that, two years plus one day, then they get the full base amount. It's ten, twenty, or forty thousand. So before they didn't really have that option, when they were rated by VA, they did get a letter. They had twelve months to decide if they wanted disabled group life insurance. After that twelve month, it was off the table. So they couldn't go back and do that. So now they have an avenue where they can actually obtain that. There is an act called the Major Richard Starr Act. And this is legislation by our representatives to discuss with Congress. Again, going back to looking at, uh, veterans who are retired, either medically or through their tenure in service and also disabled. Now, right now they have concurrent receipt. If the veteran is fifty percent disabled and is a military retiree or medically retired, in many cases they can receive both at that fifty percent rating or higher. If it's below that, there's an offset. So if they are rated at thirty percent, whatever that amount is, is deducted from their military retirement. While the Major Richard Starr Act is, is an act where they're trying to fix that. Uh, mainly because a lot of the veterans who are, are disabled uh, and are not rated fifty percent or having difficulty trying to find meaningful and gainful employment. And so their, their disabilities are holding them back from being able to do that. So this act is seeking to rectify that next step. So I'll, I'll continue to track that and, uh, see where we go with that. But subject to your questions, that's all I have for my update for the month. Anyway.
Any questions?
Sounds good.
Great.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Brittany coming in for that.
I don't think so. I know this is just a can run renewal. I don't think there's any.
Nothing changed. Do I have a motion to approve the liquor license for Spring Valley Golf Clubs? Jack?
I'll second.
Lacter? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimous. We're up to the Wellmark. Donna, you're up.
Wellbeing survey in December, Wellmark was here, uh, or yeah, they were here and talked about different options for, uh, upcoming year. The employer health and wellbeing consultant talked quite extensively about employee wellbeing. Um, they are wanting or would like to have a consider the, uh, workplace survey to evaluate what our employees' thoughts are in wellbeing. Phil's already bummed that he didn't get one. I simply didn't get one because it hasn't.
Um, we can let Phil fill it out.
So, um, I'm not able to give you the full dynamics on how that would take place. Wellmark would prepare a line, um, timeline, communication material, and then get that to employees. Um, they do say it's a value of twenty-five hundred. I'm assuming that they want us to look at other programs after that. Bringing it to your.
You know what's on the survey at all?
Questions on wellbeing. I mean, help, physical health, how to address it. Um, no, I the sample questions, the A must were very generic. Surveys are what they're worth, but.
I guess my, yeah, my question is what value is there in doing a survey?
That's why I'm bringing it to you. I just keep on getting emails to that from them. I guess it's on how do you want to address your employees' input.
If they do it for no cost, I would imagine the questions are structured in a way that you'd get beneficial information. So I I would see nothing wrong with doing it. I mean, you're not out anything. Worst case, if you don't get information that you think is valid or whatever, forget it.
Is this an online survey or paper survey or?
Well, we'll probably have to do a little bit of a I don't know that we have the capability of.
Piles at Den Walmart?
Aye. Well, yeah, they're, they have a whole team that's dedicated to wellbeing.
Yes, I'd make motion to approve doing the survey.
Motion by Stacker to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Lacter. Discussion. No cause to it.
No, it says.
Not real survey. Now.
You might not like the results.
The results. They'll encourage us maybe to look at something. I, I can't guess what the survey is going to show up, so I can't on the battery. I mean, I'm I'm just bringing it. They've, they've emailed me numerous times asking that we consider that.
Any more discussion? We have a motion and a second on the floor except to do the survey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Three to one. It passed.
Aflac is the next thing. I'm looking at open enrollment. Um, the road crew has their safety meeting on the twenty-first of April. And then we're looking at May third for the rest of the employees. One of the consideration, the Aflac, um, I think, again, this is not coming from me, but it's what she had indicated that, uh, they, we could offer a dental coverage. We currently have dental. But like with Aflac, it's a supplement. Uh, there's an orthodontic addition to it. Um, there is the third plan does allow up to two thousand dollars of expenditures. Uh, Aflac is all employee paid. So I'm just bringing it to you to see if you want to add that to the menu of other Aflac policies that are offered.
That, that would have no cost to the county. It's just another option for employees to choose, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what I thought.
Um, what's your thought? I mean, we have dental insurance already, so.
We do, um.
So if we lose people out of the dental plan we have now, does that raise the rate for the rest of minute?
I can't answer that.
I'm just, it, it should.
I don't know why, I don't know why it should. I don't know.
Because they, they, unless they have a minimum or something on it right now, which I've never heard, um, that shouldn't have an impact.
So Aflac would administer everything in it? Wouldn't dump it all on you to do anything?
No, they, she currently enrolls individuals. I provided the open enrollment, uh, provide the information. I do move some communication back and forth. Somebody has a question, but I don't do anything for the application.
Okay.
I don't meet with the staff. I don't. Again, this is not a, I'm bringing it to you. Probably I'm being the middle person. Sharon Miller is our representative.
So I take it that at the four twenty-one, that she'll do a presentation to?
She'll do a presentation for the safety and then she'll be available the third. And then she usually comes back the following week to meet with, um, staff if they actually are going to be applying. And she does that all on her own. She just sets up in a, well, she set up an election center last year.
Think so.
Yeah. Oh, I know she did. She was there because that's, we went back in our notes and I've got all of that scheduled, so. Whether or not this is added or not.
Yeah, I mean, it's not going to make any difference of her.
No, other than you have to decide if you want that on your menu. I don't know that it will change the complexion of anything you do or anything I do.
Should just give our employees another option. So I'd make motion to approve adding it.
As Mr. Stacker makes a motion to add it to Aflac. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Lacter second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, four to one.
Eight to one. Did you say?
All, all.
Oh.
Yes, unanimous.
I thought you said three to one.
You said four to, you said four to one.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I did, I did.
My brain's not functioning.
Yeah, well, four people voted and I'm so used to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Don. Appreciate it.
Thanks. All the, all the fun.
Yeah. It could be worth it. We are, we're gonna talk about the twenty-eighty agreement with workforce development. Kyle, is, uh, workforce development changing?
Yeah, so I've, I've mentioned this briefly in board updates before, but on the fifteenth last Wednesday, we had a meeting for our region. And the next day on the sixteenth, North Central had a meeting with their region, and we had been in conversations about merging with them. But there was a meeting after the election, um, probably sometime in November, if I, I'd have to go back in my notes, but there is a presentation down in Des Moines by Iowa Workforce Development and, um, long story short, there was a whole new set of hoops for us to jump through. And it doesn't look like even with merging with the new region that that will be enough to do what needs to be done. So there's been quite a lot, quite a few conversations around the state in regards to this topic, but Greg Anderson from Plymouth County had had a conversation with Michelle McNertney, the division administrator for IWD. And he said that was on Christmas Eve. And long story short, that was not a good conversation, but he had requested their. And long story short, that was not a good conversation, but he had requested their county attorney looks into whether this was required to be part of this workforce development system. And the result that was found from that is no. So they had conversations, um, and Craig is Plymouth County, but he represents Western Iowa, eighteen counties in that region. And they looked into the possibilities of dissolving the twenty-eighty. So they had meetings with federal Department of Labor, state IWD, and their staff and other, um, elect officials from their region came up with the decision to dissolve their twenty-eighty. And at the end of the day, what that does is, I mean, we're, we're kind of acting as a middleman between the federal programs that come down and the constituents that actually get the service right now. And there's a lot of tension between the state and local level. And right now, the way our twenty-eighty is written, we carry all the financial liability if funds are misspent or anything of that regard. So the summary is by dissolving the twenty-eighty, we would get rid of the financial liability, but the programs would all remain the same because it's a federal program. It will just be administered by a different entity. There's I think three options Michelle had sent out in an email, um, previously about how that could look, but we have to make a decision to kind of let them know. So at our meeting on the fifteenth, out of the ten supervisors that represent the ten counties, it was unanimous to dissolve the twenty-eighty. North Central was unanimous the next day, and previous to that, Western Iowa, eighteen counties was unanimous as well, so.
I guess my question is who's accountable then if the supervisors or the counties are not accountable for all the money spent?
So that would, the governor is technically the one that receives the grant at a state level. She designates the director of Iowa Workforce Development, Beth Townsend, to oversee the program. So depending on which option is taken after this, um, another region could pick up that liability and oversee the, um, programs for our area, which there's multiple ways to look at that. Um, so it could be another county, or it could be the state. But it would, if we dissolve the twenty-eighty agreement, we would not have the financial liability anymore.
Well, but I always think you should have somebody that's accountable. Anytime you get federal or state dollars, it has to go to somebody that.
Somebody will be. It just wouldn't be us if we dissolve the twenty-eighty. And if any county in the region does not dissolve the twenty-eighty, then they could be responsible for everyone else in the region.
Why would a county want to take the responsibility of the other counties? That, that's been my question.
It, yeah, it's a good question, but, um, the, the fact of the matter is until you have enough dollars as a pool to cover the ten percent for admin, um, for doing, having staff and all the things that are required, you don't really have an option until you get to that point. And at one point, the state was trying to force us to two regions in the entire state. It was, I mean, there's a lot, lot of history going back here, but currently, one, we're in nine regions right now, prior to this discussion here. One of those regions takes forty-some percent of the state funding because of their unemployment levels. And with the way the program is structured, the low, record low unemployment we have now will drive our funding down even farther in the years to come. So it's, it's not financially going to work unless the counties are going to contribute money for admin costs or something like that, and none of us were willing to do that. So really, it's between a rock and a hard place, but there's, there's no good option here.
So in other words, it's going, money's going to go to Des Moines and the Eastern Iowa, water, the area?
No, because they, they still have to have, I mean, there's local plan that's required. There's, there's all sorts of criteria for the federal program. So you have to show how you're, um, covering all these services. So no, it, it shouldn't just go to the major metropolitan areas. But like Craig brought up, one of our points for fighting the realignment in the beginning was not losing the one-stop center in Spencer because that's our closest access point. Well, in Craig's region, um, they moved it from what was it? From, now I'm not going to be able to spit out the other name, from one place to Sheldon. Um, and the county supervisors were never contacted. It was IWD made the decision without talking to them at all. And that's, that's some of the communication issues we've been battling for the last four plus years. Um, my entire time on the board has been battling that. And you talk to Tim Schumacher, Emmett, or Barry, or some of the other longer-term supervisors from over there, they'll say it's, it's been a constant circle of change. And the communication has been not good.
Well, I go, go back to one of the reasons I run for supervisors because I believe in home rule. And we are just going away from that in this state at a accelerated pace with everything, even down to our taxation. It's starting to irritate me. Because home rule is very important.
And, and I agree with that, but the, the kicker with this is, and I, I asked a question of other supervisors as well, but I asked what portion of the program do we actually have control over? No one came up with an answer. I haven't found an answer in four years. Others that have been there longer haven't found an answer. So if I can't justify what portion of the programs we can actually make an impact on, I, I don't think there is one to be made.
Well, I think it's the right thing to dissolve the twenty-eighty agreement. I'm not arguing it at all, but I think the program needs some revision.
Oh, it, it definitely does. And I, I brought that up to Henry and Dave after the um, legislative forum, which I'll talk on that later as well, but, um, the fact that there's thirty or a third of the state roughly that is dissolving the twenty-eighty, that I believe that should send a message. And if it doesn't, that's on people at the state level, but, um, I, I think it, it should justify some significant changes. And I don't know if that'll get accomplished, but nothing else we've done to this point has gotten the desired results, so. As, as Tim, Tim described it in our meeting, he said this is basically a vote of no confidence in the state. So.
I would make the motion to dissolve the twenty-eighty agreement. With workforce development.
I'll, I'll second.
Walter? Takes second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Four to zero. Unanimous. I forgot to one.
I don't know. I will have, I'll get back to you on that, um.
Probably going to have to send a letter to them, Eric, saying you dissolved it.
Yeah, the minutes will be, the minutes showing the vote would be
Right.
critical, obviously, but we'll have that. That's no issue. There, there was talk about passing a resolution, which, and I could pull that up. I don't, I know it was sent in my email here.
We get voted on resolution, though. I, I would think if you send the minutes to workforce development, it will surprise you a little bit.
And I. I mean, we could do a letters, you know, basically to them stating the we as the board supervisors of Sioux County have voted unanimously, unanimously to dissolve the twenty-eighty agreement. There's an official letter to them and. Yep, yep.
So.
It's twenty-eighty three to five on state.
Yeah, and.
I think.
So there, and yeah, there is, and I have, I can show this resolution to Todd. This might be something we would need to pass next week or something, but at least we have the direction now and it's been explained, so that's fine. Um, but this does say county previously signed a resolution to, uh, which some of, this might already be tweaked ours. Yeah, I'll, it's been kind of crazy here this last week, so I'll get this to Todd and if he, if he feels there's anything extra, we may put it on the agenda for next week for a resolution person. But, but, yeah, I'll, I'll be in contact with you.
Take care of it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda. Phil? You're up. Credit card.
Yeah, I put that back on the agenda because um, we discussed it last week with being the restrictions that was put on the card, um, was just fuel and lodging for the ones that are in the vehicles. I need to add into that, um, county-related vehicle expenses because if we're somewhere blowing tire, uh, need a jump start, dead battery, something like that down in Iowa City, we have the ability to get back on the road again. I, I understand the party all of discuss as far as no food, so I went ahead and typed up a, a EMS guideline, uh, which I put right on there. It's in addition to the county credit card policy, which also included the copy of the county credit card policy in there, so I guess just some clarification on how we want to do that, but I think that county-related vehicle thing is, is important for out on the road, away from the area. And I didn't think of that last week. We're talking about the, it's the old lodging.
Yeah, it makes sense to have that in there.
And then I also had in there a little difference on credit card that I have a few extra things, you know, as far as supplies and equipment that we don't have. With some companies that we're not unable to have contract or have accounts with, we have a couple of those, um, not something that happens real regularly, but there's a couple that we do not have accounts with. And ones occasionally, we'll buy stuff from Amazon. That's one.
I guess my question would be why are we making a policy on top of what we already have? I mean, it, our current one already says not for cash advances, alcoholic beverages, tobacco, products, meals or food. So that's already included in there. Specifically says it should be for county business expense only. Um, violations may result in disciplinary action, all that stuff. And it says it's limited to the following purposes. Hotel motel, guaranteed reservations, vehicle expenses, registration fees, airlines, car rental, department expenses that require a government credit card, prisoner meal expense during transport. So I think all that's spelled out fairly clearly there.
The only advantage would be is the credit cards that the staff will have access to that's in the vehicles. Those cards would have specific limitations. I don't know where they would use them other than that anyway. It's just if we want to limit them on what specifically they use it for.
So you're basically just adopting what the county policies on credit cards, but just adding.
He's alr, he's already under the county policy as, as any.
That was kind of my intent last week, but you know, the discussion last week with limitations on, on the ones in the vehicles, I went ahead and put together limitations. So I'm fine either way. I just want to make sure we're able to cover the vehicle expenses.
His policy does say including food for event. But your policy says no food and our auditing firm will not like any kind of food on the credit card.
Good. So if you buy food, you're going to have to get it reimbursed.
So as long as we approve food on the agenda for a training session, that's what we've done.
Yeah, because it's the public purpose.
But it shouldn't be on the credit card. He can still purchase it and it can be allowed, but not on the credit card.
Right.
Yeah.
It can be refunded, but it's going to be a, a special both through the monthly claims.
Or charging it to wherever you're getting food and have that bill us directly.
I guess. I would say just use a county credit card policy.
Yeah, I want to get rid of policies that don't match. I'd agree with that.
I'd make a motion to use the county credit card policy alone or strictly the county credit card policy for EMS.
Yes. I'll second that. Any discussion? Everybody understand the motion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Four. Unanimous. Um.
Next one is approval to sign the, um, hospital contract, which is the extension of one year, uh, at the full rate for the first quarter and then fifty percent rate for the remainder of the year. Same one that you and I discussed, same one that you and I discussed with the hospital, so nothing has changed there. Just better get it assigned and, and approved on both sides.
Motion? Sure.
If you want to take it back to the connect to take it back, the, the advisory just said, you know, whatever that we come up with. We, they were aware of this contract. If we made any changes for the better, they were okay with that, which we didn't, so.
Yeah. Yes, I'm just curious why the rate drops after the quarter.
Well, we, we have a motion on the floor. We should have a second and then discussion to be technical.
Yeah, I'll second it. So we can have discussion now.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious as to why the, the rate drop on, you know, either two, two years ago.
We wrote this agreement with the hospitals, a way to help us jumpstart to get some money going. The hospital, where they're structured, is unable to tax for EMS. So they have, they can only use revenues for EMS. They can't use tax dollars for EMS. Um. This is all they're willing to do going forward for one more year. And after that, they say they're not going to give us anything. And still, we still can charge for our services through the hospital for, for insurance and Medicare, Medicaid. We still get reimbursed for those. This was just extra on top. Um, they're willing to revisit it six months down the road and see where, where we're at.
Okay, so there is a chance for, to increase, decrease again, so.
I would say slim that there's a chance.
Okay, okay.
So, and I'm, I'm not entirely satisfied with this by any means, as Phil knows, but, um.
I don't think any of us are or the board is, but.
Yeah, so the thing, the thing they had said is that their attorney considers it double taxation to use funds from to pay for EMS. I don't necessarily agree with that, but, um.
Yeah, because they're not using tax dollars to pay for it.
Well, exactly.
It's coming out of their operating funds, so I'll consider it if they're not using tax dollars.
So we met with them, when Roger and I met with them, that was in December, I believe, and they said in November they're operating was in the red. Kyle and I met with them. They said November and December, we're both in the red, so they have no revenue to give us.
But anyone that runs a business.
My comment, that's, that's how you do accounting.
Um, if they would have filed under, not under three forty-one C or whatever, instead of A, they would have had a different approach to how they use tax dollars.
Right.
That's, that's the problem is how they were originally structured.
Free hospitals, free hospitals in the state of Iowa, they're structured the way that Suits Regional is.
Correct.
All the rest aren't.
Yeah.
And, and the biggest portion of this agreement was to bridge that transition from what we had three, four years ago to what we were going towards. So I mean, that, it was, it was a Band-Aid. I would have, I mean, I still think the hospital should have some skin in the game as far as this goes, but they did have a offer from another EMS provider that offered to take all their transfers, um, at no charge to the hospital, so. At no charge to the hospital, so. Until, until their options decrease, our options are. Relatively low as well, because take away the transfer, you take away income as well too, so. There's two sides to the equation there, it's. I would.
It's a great revenue stream for the. Ambulance service, so.
What is gonna happen? You know, when we get our final. Lucky amount, if we know what we can do for staffing and stuff, we're just gonna have to, you know, take a serious look at how we're providing coverage in the county and. But if they're not willing to step up an abundant person, then. There's no guarantee that we're gonna be available right away to take a transfer, we gotta make sure the county's covered first.
Yeah, so when Phil and I were.
Earlier, like to speed transparently, there's not emergency ones that, uh, don't require paramedics. If they want, if they wanna send somebody to their hospital as, as the paramedic or the nurse of ambulance.
Yeah, and that was, that was one of the things I discussed with Phil was different. Staffing options and timeframes as far as response and. We discussed that with Dara as well to, to get a feel for their expectations and everything and. I think we have some options moving forward in that regard, but as far as this agreement, I think this is the best we're gonna get for now.
Yeah, well, and we're gonna have a year to work things out, see if we can make it better or. Or how we can work together better.
Yeah.
And I mean, this is, it sets the stage to start at least a good conversation with them and. Do our due diligence to try to.
Originally, originally, July two thirty was the end.
Right.
So this is at least better than what we had a few months ago.
Yep, so I have a motion and a second on the floor, any more discussion? Hearing on all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries unanimous. You're still up.
Last one I have is just a, a renewal of our medical director agreement. And the form that they typed up is just a one-page extension of the current contract, it's, it's with the same doctor, Dr. Lantby is our medical director. Coming to county as well. It's just a two-year extension of that agreement, it's, it's the first two years of that agreement is, is ending, and this is just a two-year extension.
So the original agreement, is that the line where it says the parties agreed to the following amendment to the emergency. Medical Services Medical Director Agreement with the commencement date of March one twenty twenty. Is that the correct date that's supposed to be in there, is that supposed to read? Further out?
It's, it's replacing, it's replacing the prior agreement, so that is referencing when the.
Okay, so that's the original agreement date.
Okay, number.
Yep, that's.
One says to extend it by a period of two years.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just a little confused as to why the twenty twenty was there, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't like a.
Yeah, so the other confusing piece for you is the original one's not in here.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, it, this is an extension.
And I can get you, God, but I just did, they, you know.
No, I, I just wanted to make sure that was, you know, purposely that date.
First one might have been a three-year contract, I, not real positive, it's twenty twenty-three, it might have been a three-year. Original one, this is a two-year extension.
You don't have the contract with you?
No.
Okay. So our motion to approve would have to also include a motion for the chairman of the board to sign it.
Well, there's something here for you to sign.
Oh, there is?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know. We do have something to sign. So, we are good. Do I have a motion to approve EMS director agreement?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Walter, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Pla. I see Jack raised his hand.
I don't care.
Doesn't matter whoever wants to.
Rock, paper, scissors?
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried unanimous. And I have a paper too.
So back on that. One with the hospital for the, that's signed by Dart Albert. And she just has on here her place for me to sign, she doesn't have the board signature or, or someone to attest to the signature. Do you want this changed, or are you okay if I just sign this?
I think the board should sign, chairman should sign it.
Well, is that, is that you or EMS board?
Just says the EMS. EMS system.
Um, yeah, it probably should be. The board.
Being, being that we're supposed to oversee it, I think it would be appropriate to have.
So do you want to change this or just sign this?
They could probably just sign it.
Sign it, may have signed, find if you signed, but I think the chairman of the board should be.
Where do you want it signed at? Use EMS system, you want me to sign it underneath and stamp it?
Sign right on the lines, I don't care.
Why don't I stamp it, the date, and I'll sign underneath like I do anything else? And then you can sign it as EMS direct.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
I have, hopefully for a couple of weeks. Our next advisory board is coming up on the seventh. March, so. Our non-advisor board, the advisory council left.
Yeah, it's not a board, that's illegal.
Yeah.
Hey, thank you.
Do you want this one, Bill?
You want, who's the office stuff? Thanks, Steph.
Thanks, thanks.
We are up to decision to approve the payment for the retainer on the courthouse roof project. And Tammy, you have all the information in the folder.
Bill is on vacation, so he's not here to talk to you guys today, but I did talk to him. Um, and he said, um, although they haven't completed the walkthrough because it's winter. But everything is good, he sees no reason why a retainer cannot be paid.
Anybody have?
Are you here for this roof stuff or something else?
Anybody have any questions on the roof?
I guess one of the things I was gonna ask was, what was the date it was supposed to be completed? Cause I didn't, I didn't necessarily see that in here.
October eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
For the project completion?
Well, that's what it says, date of substantial completion.
Well, yeah, but when was it supposed to be completed versus when was it?
I'd have to grab the. Contract and see. If they're, see whether the.
Cause I, I feel like from our conversations, it was discussed how late it was many times and. Um, I know this is dated months ago, but. If it was, if it was not completed. Till after the project date, there should be damages in there somewhere.
I think part of it was not being able to get some of the supplies.
That's still part of the contract.
Well, but.
Yeah, cuz we didn't, we didn't give them any extra time in a change order.
They're gonna claim a force to your rear on you and you'll pay it anyhow.
Unless they got a letter from the company, that'd be hard to do.
Well, they explained it, that they were having trouble getting enough supplies to complete it, and they didn't have a start until they had everything to complete it, so. We didn't get it in writing, but we had it in a verbal.
My next question on that though too is, are they still gonna come do the walk? What guarantees that? Cause if we pay them this, then they just. Well, you proved it without the walkthrough, so. Let's, uh. Make sure that they come do the walkthrough, check.
Yeah, I mean, I would. I would rather do this all after. Questions are answered and it's a hundred percent complete.
What was your conversation with them?
What is complete, it's just, the project is completely complete, it's just. Willie hasn't done the walkthrough with them, he's standing on himself, but. The reason that they haven't, because we got, it's been the current snowy and not everything's melted and. Don't wanna do it. The weather conditions.
My problem is if we pay this and. They basically close the folder on it, say it's done. Then when the snow does melt, we discover an issue, you know, what's. Are they gonna come back and fix it or?
There's. It looked like there was warranty paperwork in there.
Then we had an architecture hired to oversee the project, so actually some of that's on him if it's not done correctly.
Well, it is, but it was signed by the contractor on nine nineteen, signed by the architect on eleven two. And here we are, two twenty-one, it's finally coming to us, so. That leaves a lot of questions in my mind.
Does Willie had any contact with the architecture? I'm going to, uh. Say that I'd be, yeah, Willie should, uh. Get in contact with the architecture firm that we hired to see if the work was done appropriately and then put it back on the agenda. Is that fair with everybody?
Yeah, I, I agree with that, and I'd also like, I mean, whenever you get a chance to look up that contract, I'd like to see the completion date stuff. Yeah, or when it was supposed to be completed.
And if. We are going to pay this, I'd like to see at least some sort of agreement with the company that they will still come do the walkthrough. Because I, I just. Me personally, I don't feel comfortable with paying it and then. They never come do the walkthrough, so.
I'm, I'm assuming that the architecture is supposed, architecture firm is supposed to be here in the walkthrough. Or at least available.
Yeah, you would assume so.
I would think.
Should be standards.
Questions for Willie, I guess.
Do you wanna make that as a motion, Roger, or?
Yeah, I'll make that a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Just Tammy, Tammy had asked for you to repeat what you.
Oh, that we delay the approval of this. Certificate of payment for a week until we get in touch with the architectural firm to make sure that all the work was done properly.
Probably, probably don't, don't specify the timeline, just, just leave the timeline off, let, let him get in contact and put it back on when it's ready.
And, uh. An agreement with the firm that did the project that they will be available for a walkthrough with the architect and Willie. That satisfactory?
Yeah.
Everybody understand the motion? Do I have a second? I didn't know who did it.
Yeah, you did.
Okay. Then, I don't know difference between hands and invoice. I have a motion and second on the floor, does everybody understand the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried unanimous. Thank you. Uh, the next one.
I think we're gonna have to postpone this one because I had, um. Melissa Lear from Care Connections, um, had suggested that we go into a contract with Winnebago County to share their. Advocate since we have not been able to get one, we don't even have any applications and it's been in the paper for months. Um, so she had sent an email to them and encouraged us to reach out, so I did reach out to Winnebago County. To see if their, um, advocate. Would be able to. I have not heard anything back from the advocate from the county supervisors or from the auditor. So I think we're gonna need to postpone until I hear.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah, uh, you're, you're still putting ads in the paper?
I guess, I don't know if my dad is still putting ads. She's.
To comply with the state regulations, we have to keep putting ads in, if we don't have one, so it'd be good if you asked her.
Yeah, um, did Melissa send this, like, um, agreement or?
Yeah.
Okay.
The agreement's from Melissa, yes.
Okay, I was just curious.
She, um, copy you guys in like emails at all?
No.
She sent the email to Tyler White, Susie Otter, Winnebago County, Bell Johnson. I guess Carter, me and Barry, they're saying. Um, and I, and then I sent it. So I will.
Sure.
Try to follow up and I'll follow up with Melissa, see if she's heard anything.
Sounds good, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Kyle, you have discussion and decision, planning and zoning.
Yeah, with the way everything went time-wise this last week and Monday being a holiday, I didn't get all the information I was looking for, figured out for this, but. Trying to look at other options yet, so.
So you get the survey, I stand up.
Um, yeah, I was looking at that, I haven't looked at it recently, cuz I know you'd say it could be updated, but I checked it a couple days later and that was good information.
Inclusion is, everybody does it at different. So I love it in place.
Yeah, there's a lot.
I think I, I seen, it almost seemed like more were with the Santerian.
There's definitely a chunk of them that were.
Yeah, yeah.
And, yeah, some, some have their own.
Yeah, I did, I didn't know how that was.
That's surprising.
So, yeah, it's good information to look at, thanks.
So.
So I would, I don't know, put it on for another week or two and. That, that would last you two weeks, just because.
Yeah, do it two weeks, that'll give you some time.
Yeah.
Well, and. The hearing is next Monday, isn't it?
Joe?
Which hearing?
The planning and zoning has a twenty-seventh, yes.
Yeah.
But that's for.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be Monday night, but, and that, yeah, so yeah, two weeks would be fine.
The hearing with planning and zoning, yeah, yeah. I was thinking it's probably be a good idea to wait until after that, to.
Well, I don't know what you're planning on changing on it, but it's. Of course, takes time to get everything.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't, it wouldn't change over immediately, no matter what was decided.
Right, it takes a lot of time.
Yeah. Probably be a several month process.
We have no instruction in the right way, I stopped down and talked to Doug.
Yeah, he's done.
I talked to the other Doug.
Oh.
We got two Dugs.
Yes.
Is Doug Crouch coming up for discussion or anything, or he not have anything?
He didn't have anything, so.
Yeah.
Nothing with the engineer or zoning administrator.
Yeah.
So we are up to discussion with our auditor, and did you have anything?
Just to your list. So I don't, pardon me, my name's Will Haver, I'm working with Navigator.
Oh.
So just here to, hey, to see what went, that goes on up here, cuz brand new to the team, but we just wanna get inside of it, yeah.
Okay.
Add what this needs to be.
Yeah, when, when you, when you said that, I recognize your name, so we've had phone calls and emails and stuff, but. Yeah, well, Tammy, you're up.
Okay, so, um. First, Governor Renault signed Senate by a one eighty-one yesterday, so that is official. So that is officially a bill. This morning already at seven thirty, we got emails from the Department of Revenue and Department of Management with the correct rule backs. So assessing limitations, whatever you want to call them. Um, so I talked to Christie this morning. She is starting valuations this morning right now without me and then I'll join her when we get to the board meeting. And then we'll hopefully in the next couple of days get our valuations read down, our tips read down. And then send out all the information to the cities. Um, and then we will be able to get our budgets updated and figure out where we're sitting. I'm hoping um, we can get all that done and maybe have a budget, talk about the budget uh, Friday afternoon, if that works for everybody. We have a busy schedule this week because tomorrow we have election worker training where our special bachelor member seven. And then Friday morning, we have the public test for our election equipment. So, um, our schedule has a lot going on without having to redo that too, but I'm hoping that we can get that done. Um, so I will be in contact with you guys later today or tomorrow morning to see if that works for everybody to come in that Friday afternoon.
Would it work better for you to wait until next Tuesday?
I don't want to because I gotta do the budget and I gotta start getting it. But it takes me quite a long time to get all the others in that department management and get them balanced with our numbers, so.
That's why I didn't want you to be rushed.
Yeah, I know. Uh, so I need time, once you guys look at it, to get all that done.
Okay.
Cause I need you guys to look at it first, make sure levy rates are.
Here, but I don't care.
Make sure the levy rates are where you at them before I put them in the Department of Management. That comes after you guys.
I guess I, I would be fine with the Friday afternoon.
Okay, okay. So I'll, I'll look at, see what we did, um, today and tomorrow and then go from there. The weather could also be a factor, so we'll see what the weather's like.
Just come in if you get snowed in, you get to get some extra work done.
Exactly. So also, um, the auditing for our partner companies here this week, uh, doing our yearly audit. They came yesterday, which was kind of nice because there was nobody else here, except for us.
Just gotta be right on the line.
Being yours pretty good, wouldn't it? Sorry, I probably missed some of that.
That's okay.
And any big highlights?
Um, I don't know what I said now.
Well, you're just basically talking the timeline and getting things done and how the weather could affect that, but we'll look at Friday afternoon, so.
That one I first here this week, they started yesterday. The courthouse was closed yesterday except for our office. We were open for, yesterday was the last day to ask for an application for an absentee ballot. So we were here till five o'clock last night and the auditor was able to come yesterday, get some stuff done without it being so hectic in the courthouse. So that looked good. And they will be here the whole week this week. They're set up in the, uh, old boardroom. So if you want to go in and say hi, they're in there. Working, getting our credit done. Um, I did hear yesterday, uh, Senate study bill was in twenty-four is still being debated, uh, in the legislature, but they have changed it. It will not be affected this year twenty-four. So we don't have to worry about that taking effect this year. So it's still going forward, but it will not affect the year. So that is a relief. Um, there are still, I still have some concerns with this bill.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, I, I hope you have a chance to look at it and speak to people about your concerns. I did forward you this, this morning, a worksheet that I said put together of how it's gonna affect each county financially. So if you have a chance to get that worksheet, please do. Uh, that kind of talks about it a little bit, uh, cause it does affect growth.
Mm-hmm.
So it limits our, uh, limits it. Let's see what else. Like I said, we have training tomorrow, public test Friday. Busy week next week, then, uh, we'll be get, getting everything ready for the election, uh, September. So we delivering equipment March sixth, picking up equipment March eighth. Getting everything sent out to the state. Uh, we did have some people come in yesterday because they saw the signs outside that said come in to vote and they, uh, were in the wrong district. So it does only affect those people that are in the park union. North Kansasville districts. Um, if you have any questions about that, those are the only people that it does affect. And then I think that that.
Facture eleven twenty-four. Lacter and Steckman, I think we all led to meeting Saturday morning.
Legislative forum.
Yes, yep.
And we expressed our concern with one eighty-one and eleven twenty-four. And basically they, they agreed that it was too late to implement this year.
Yeah, and I just pulled up this, um, fiscal impact sheet. It looks like is there really only three counties that it would affect with a loss?
No, no, it affects just by everything.
Everybody.
Well, column F has revenue, loss or gain, and everything is blank except three.
Are you looking in rural or?
Yeah, I mean.
You can't go in the real basic.
Get a look at.
Oh, I didn't, just saw the tab for general here.
Oh, you gotta go back to general basic.
I know, it doesn't have anything for us on general either.
Well, lower devaluation by from one eighty-one to one seventy or one seven hundred. No growth. Percent change is five point eight seven percent on valuation.
No, that's key. Uh, um, we're six point nine five value change.
Yeah, we are. I'm online on.
Yeah, I, I highlighted mine so you can see across there, but.
So this computer, wait and get one I can highlight with.
So on the left side, it has nothing, but on the right side, it has a loss of two hundred thousand for the growth limitation.
Two hundred thousand for the growth, yeah.
Bro, let me go back to the tab. Well, that's got a hundred and four thousand loss for the growth limitation there too.
Mm-hmm.
So yeah, it does.
Yeah, six point nine percent's a lot.
I was trying to sort through the, the columns and everything here real quick, but yeah, it's got.
Really, it don't affect real basic except in some of the small counties. With no evaluation.
Only way that it will affect us, uh, tremendously is if our, cause right now we're way below the max. The maximum is three point ninety-five percent, which some people are at that. We are way below that. We're one point four four, I believe. So, um, that isn't really gonna affect us.
Yeah, very few counties max out their rural basic.
Well.
They are max.
And yeah, Roger, like Roger mentioned, we had the legislative forum on Saturday, um, and we both said stuff during the discussion, during questions and afterwards, um, Josh and I stuck around for a while afterwards, but I talked to Henry and Dave about this each end of individually, and then I talked to them both about workforce, um, together at the end, but I think from the discussions there, there's quite a, quite a ways for it to go before it actually gets done. So they're, they're open for input and suggestions. So now would be a good time to be communicating those.
Dave's wife is a treasurer for Brian's company.
Yeah, she's.
So she, she was very.
She, she knows.
Informed on how county budgets work.
Yeah, I've had, I've had several conversations with both of them. She's, she, she keeps him informed of the county side of things very closely, and that's a huge benefit to us.
Yeah, she was very intelligent, how the budget worked and we had a good conversation.
Yep.
So, and she's been straight and day about.
She'll keep him in line. He's not too far out.
That, he's not, he, he's doing a good job. What's up, Mark?
I didn't know that that worksheet has stuff listed either because it's, it doesn't talk about losing our supplementary or general basis. So, or what I'm, so that is not reflected in that worksheet that I could show. And that's where we'll be cutting back. It's if we only have a three point five that we start supplementing that stuff.
So how can I do stuff on that? Well, this is what I have a little bit of a hard time with.
Um, well, they're putting a max, it's just gonna be one general levy of six point five.
Gonna get rid of the two and combine them together into this general.
Yep.
Yeah, so we will, but three point five, I know, one point four four, we only have three point five except for um, but they changed the wording out. It was one thing, and now they changed it to disaster, natural disasters or some kind of disasters and courthouse.
Yeah, and I kinda, I kinda laughed. I heard, or I don't know if I'd heard or if I had pulled up the bill and looked, that Farm Bureau was one that was supporting this. And I don't have any idea why Farm Bureau in this county in particular would support it because if we take it off general basic taxes, if you put the same dollars on rural, every farmer's taxes are going up.
Yep.
It's.
It's counterintuitive.
Counterproductive.
It is.
But I don't think people understand how the budget works. And I think even some of the legislators at this state level don't understand. Um, I'm glad there's a lot of people that have been talking about it. We watched, uh, the debate yesterday and, uh, and the time before, and there are a lot of county officials that are talking to them, and they are talking to county officials too, which is good because they can give them information that they don't already have.
Yeah, I mean, I had conversations with Dave even while I was out in DC, um, and Dennis Guth, um, because it was on the Senate side of things, and I'd anticipated dealing with and others on the House side after I got back and stuff, which is obviously in the process now, but I mean, there's they both said there's a lot of conversation about this one. It's, it's night and day compared to one eighty-one, and they thought that was a lot, so. Yeah, there's, there's good reason for it.
When I talked to Guth and a couple of the other ones, they didn't really realize that we only get sixteen to eighteen percent of the dollars from cities.
I said you can. From, from, from your property taxes, where a small portion of the.
I, I said you could take all the county share of the property tax that the cities collect.
Yeah.
And you, you're still only getting sixty percent reduction. So tell me how you're gonna save all this money.
Yeah, the majority, the majority of the pie is in other hands.
Yeah.
And I, I shared that with both Henry and Dave as well afterwards, so.
I think all of us here, everybody in general is wants to lower property taxes. Somebody wants to pay them what they have to.
If you don't.
At what cost? You know, we still have to be able to run the county. Well, that's a concern.
Well, it's, it's providing a service. It's not a operation to make money. It's providing a service. So if you're providing the service responsibly, that's the best we can do.
But they're not touching fifty-eight.
They're not touching the schools, they're not touching the cities, they're not touching the colleges.
Not touching the colleges, not touching the hospitals. Look, they're sixty-some percent of our budget.
Or more.
Yeah, so, okay, we got thirty-eight percent left to, you know, that the rural can be affected. So what are we gonna do? Cut everything out of the rural?
Yeah.
I don't, they're not looking at it holistically.
No, and I, I made that point with those two as well, but I'll, it'll get further.
A lot of it is, is public knowledge too. People don't know what they're voting for. I mean, people hear, oh, lower taxes. Hey, I'm for that. They don't see what, what impact that's gonna have on the county. And I think, you know, it would be moved on to get that information out there and to have people learn about how county budgets work and stuff like that.
Good idea.
Yep.
Well, and the other thing is I, I, we didn't plow snow at Christmas time in the north part of the county and my phone rang off, so off the wall there on Christmas Day. So people expect a lot more than they used to.
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm gonna say that people are more demanding on getting the roads plowed than they were fifty years ago because yeah, people are on the move more. So, yeah.
That, I didn't, that, and back in the day, people were more friendly to help out their neighbor and scoop their road and stuff like that without complaining or anything. So I mean, there's some of that there too.
It, it wasn't as much Christmas Day. I think everyone understood that it was Christmas Day and they spend it with their families. If they were gonna go somewhere, most either knew that it would be questionable conditions or they were there ahead of time. It was the day after Christmas that upset everyone. They were back in travel mode again and.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I have enough people complaining they couldn't get out Christmas Day. But board reports, Jack, do you have anything?
Uh, I got the, uh, board health meeting. Um, yes, we talked about the board health. Sending a letter to the board thirty-five percent regarding pipeline. Um, back to Van Tager was very outspoken about not taking um, sides or, you know, uh, saying anything about you know, that's like, that being, that supporting it or we're not being bored either way, just staying with ideas about safety and, and, you know, about health, things like that. So the one thing she was concerned, she wanted, wanted us to get back, take back, and we couldn't vote on it because we didn't have a board. So we'll have to do it the next week, but uh, one thing, uh, she wanted a little more clarification on is, you know, the, the, uh, uh, separation distances for residents is I think the one letter we had there instead of thousand feet. She just wanted with the board. You know, would like to see in that.
But we started with bigger separation distances in our ordinance that we haven't passed yet.
But so she likes to get some clarification on that and, you know, she, and she'd like to have some science behind, you know, uh, the separation distance, you know, why a thousand? I said, well, they, they did, they did, uh, talk about that at the, you know, the last meeting, we talked about, you know, how, how they feed it, uh, the gas would dis- uh, dissipate uh, if there was a leak. And I think they were, were they talking like three hundred fifty feet? That was, that was the thing said at that last meeting about dispensation of the gas. But, so anyways, she, um, I guess I need to know, we have to get, get some direction from the board, what, what I should take back to them. Put in there as far as separation distances and, and the one letter, you know, exactly, it was primarily about, you know, uh, safety, uh, you know, not, nothing about being forward or against it, but rather just looking at the overall health, you know, the dangers of, of the gas, if there was a leak and one of those issues, of course, is that separation distance. So I think they kind of let, let them know what we'd like to, what we'd like to see in there as far as that separation distance to kind of coincide with our ordinance that we put together.
Well, I don't, I don't even have the number that's supposed to be in our ordinance off the top of my head, but that was, that was one of my concerns from the beginning is having science and facts behind that. And I know when Shelby County did their ordinance, they had their board help do something. I think they passed a resolution or whatever. But the structure of it maybe doesn't matter, but it was a very lengthy process. It was intensive and it, it all lined up together. So I think that's the right direction, but I don't, I don't think we had that direction from the beginning. It was just throwing numbers at the wall and that's, I guess my opinion, that's not gonna hold up in any court and so I, I don't know what to tell you in that regard, but um, I know there's been discussions about plume studies and all that stuff. I I haven't gotten into all the weeds of that, but one of the arguments of our attorney was that the federal government regulates safety, but they leave citing up to the locals. But then he filed that up by saying, so his, his argument for us is that we can, um, cite it based on safety concerns. And I, I, I don't really know how you can do that, but I, I don't know, that's.
Well, safety is the only hammer we have.
Well, it's, it's different in the code of Iowa because yes, three thirty-one, we're supposed to look out for the health, safety, welfare, all that. Uh, but when this specific project is governed by. But when this specific project is governed by state and federal regulations that supersede that. You get into a different, different category there, so. I don't, I don't know what to tell you.
Like I said, I mean, Van Tager's, basically, she just didn't want to throw a number out there without.
I fully agree with that.
Having, you know, something to base it on, that one example.
Well, we don't have anything yet.
Yeah, so anyway, uh, we didn't, we didn't, you know, put in two votes, we didn't have one, we didn't have a quorum, but. And they want some clarification as far as, you know, what, what kind of number. Is gonna be safe, you know.
Roger, do you know what number was even put in our ordinance, is it a thousand feet?
It's a thousand feet.
I think that's what it was.
Uh, we just talked about that because, uh, we got an email, uh. Butter had gotten a call from a constituent who was concerned about there was. Inflicting information, and so we looked at it and sent it to Tim as well, um. Let's see here. Page four under the Board of Health that says a thousand feet for all residents until an updated emergency plan is approved. On page eleven, it says a half mile from any occupied structure. So we asked for, um, clarification on that, and he did send a clarification on. Explaining that, so.
Well, the proposed pipeline is closed to. Houses in Irvington, they're less than a half mile.
So do you want me to tell you what is the answer?
If, if you got it.
Yeah, he said the reference on page four in the whereas clauses is a legislative finding. Or a statement of facts or authority that support the ordinance being adopted. The clause notes that the DOH recommends pipelines be kept at least a thousand feet from all residences. That should be interpreted, interpreted as your assessment of the minimum safe distance. The actual setback the ordinance is setting is a half a mile, which is at least a thousand feet. There is no conflict as the ordinance is basically just being more conservative, conservative than the minimum recommendation. In other words, despite the reference to a thousand feet on page four, the setback is being set at half a mile, so the setback is a, is a half mile. Not a thousand feet.
So how is that not conflicting with itself?
Because it doesn't, because it's.
But there's more, not less.
It has to be at least a thousand.
Okay, so they're saying, it's saying the Board of Health is recommending at least a thousand and the ordinance is going above that. Okay.
But they're in court right now in two different counties contesting the half mile.
Yep.
So ours, our setback is, is a half a mile, not a thousand feet.
Yeah.
The Board of Health says at least.
Shelby County is, but what's the other county?
Story.
Story.
Ames area, yeah.
Yep.
So anyway, just need to give some direction as far as.
Yep, I don't think we can until we actually have those hearings in, what is it, March?
But isn't, isn't that what the.
February.
Planning and zoning.
Yes.
February twenty seventh, I think.
February twenty seventh, planning and zoning meets, then we can actually give them a number.
Yeah, February twenty seventh, five o'clock in here.
That's, that's kind of backwards from how Shelby County did it, and that was one of my points, I mean, all these. All these pieces of the puzzle were put together before they did their ordinance, after.
Well, I mean, I, I guess the point is, Van Tager, probably ready, so she just wants to have a number that reflects. Whether it be science or, or sort of information that.
Right.
If there is a, if there is a pipeline break. This gas will be safe, you'll be safe to be in the, in the vicinity if you're. You know, eight hundred feet away from the break or a thousand feet away or whatever. And so that's anything closer than that, you know, could, could lead to death or injury.
And I, I believe I heard last week when Summa was talking, they. Did they say they have plume studies done, but they would not release them?
Right.
That's what they said.
He was, he did give him some information about. And, and like the time when the parts from Bayon or whatever were low enough, you know, to be. Be there, and I can't remember how much time he said that was, or what the, how many feet away from the break that was.
Okay.
Did give some information about that.
Well, I mean, that's.
That's word of mouth, we need something a little bit more.
I mean.
I can tell you with the navigator. It's three hundred fifty meters five minutes. Either that one said on a quiz, about a thousand one hundred feet seven. It's about what a reasonable distance is and how long it takes before you're.
You said three hundred fifty meters and how long?
About five minutes, three hundred seconds. There, they've got a study that I can email you all, which they did from some Great Britain tests. Where they flew up a segment of pipeline, we spoke that meeting here, late January, but I got S W to budget stuff, but that was also.
Can you just send it to me, I'll share with you.
So I also want to start figuring out, I don't know, this budget stuff is gonna be screwed up, your schedule's even more, but. Start setting up some virtual for the next two or three weeks, so y'all could give us information from that, but. They pressurized a big five hundred foot set of pipe to the one of eight miles, blew it in half. And they set up all these sensors, hundred fifty meter intervals dug, they ground it up in the air. And what they found was, if you're in three hundred meters for about five minutes, that's a lot of CO2, it's a lot of oxygen in that environment. But after about five minutes with less than favorable conditions, kind of all day, maybe five miles an hour winds. That CO2 dispersed back to the point where people can breathe. Longer than five minutes, I wanna say about ten minutes is where it was normal, five minutes, I wanna say you're still gonna get maybe. Light-headed or nauseous, working that far, but for the most part, after about five minutes, it's pretty much gone. At least that's what, that's the product they're still putting information about.
Would, would it make a lot of difference on the size of the pipe though?
Yep, so it's all about distances, how much is actually getting up out of it, different ruptures. That's what they're ironing out right now, what their main line valve spacing was ours, so what the actual, actual distances of how much you get up in the air. Average, they're floating out, I wanna say it's about seven miles of the whole project. As of like their spacing, but those get a lot tighter whenever you get to urban populations or. Popular areas up here versus when you're in the middle of nowhere and you're getting up to those bigger pipeline diameters.
Yeah, for some, it's gonna be a twenty-four inch pipeline, and they had their proposals at twenty. Miles apart.
They said the max was twenty miles, I know that, I, I didn't.
Did they say two miles within?
Well, then by Irvington, they had it down to like eight miles, but that's still.
There's a minimum of max, I know the maximum is twenty, but that's specifically regulated life, that was a.
And they say there's a. Oh, yeah, it shows.
But Fens, Fens is reviewing these rules again, too.
So, yeah, that's going in the legislature, uh, yeah.
I mean.
Where that's gonna go at the moment, but they are updating, at least navigators, whole thing is there above all safety and uh. Above and exceeding safety.
Yeah, they have one directly south of, south of Elgona, near one sixty-nine, and then one by. P fifty-six.
So they aren't too far apart, both, both sides are Irvington, correct?
Yeah, yep. Irvington's almost centered between there. And then there's two just outside the county in Palo Alto and Hancock, a little ways.
Well, they're pretty much on the county border. So how far are you on navigator and getting used to it?
So last number I heard is about twenty percent across the state, but they only opened those land negotiations in October. And I was also a public artist, so they said I had notifications, and they've got, had adoption, let them all take care of their harvests. Now we're starting to get some of the snowbirds back in, now they're starting to set the folks out now. I was gonna say, now the land started, oh, we said full spring, now we're gonna back to play, um, but. Another land, they, they are land agents, I should say, are starting.
And the county getting used to it.
I couldn't tell specifically who was where, but I know that they have the.
I've, I have been getting calls from people that had meetings scheduled with them, so I can't say whether. They signed or not, but I know they are working here, I don't know if it's one agent or twenty agents, but they are.
I could find out.
Discussing. That's probably not information that we need right now.
We don't need it, I'm just curious. Your surveying's all done?
For the notice, I, I have Brad do the team, I can sign up, I can stay at my first month's.
Yeah, he's taken the spot that Lainey had before, he moved on.
He's at the center of that.
Yep. Yeah, I'll tell you. Your face, of course.
Josh? Um, yeah, we had the emergency management meeting last Thursday night to. Um, address a couple of issues, I won't get into that because. Got an email from Carissa Friday, there were some issues with that meeting, um, due to. Misrepresentation. The quorum was not met, and the votes did not count. So that meeting, any decisions made in that meeting are non-existent. So she will be scheduling another meeting, and I'm not sure as to when that will be. And then Saturday, we did the, um, we had the legislative. Forum with, uh, Henry Stone and Dave rallied. Got to talk with them a little bit afterwards and got some questions and stuff. Posed about different things with the tax, uh, bills and, and. Pipeline issues and things like that, so, um, that was, that was pretty good, it was. Very informative from them on some other things, too, they also went over a little bit on the ESA accounts. Where the, the ESAs and stuff that passed and, and discussed, uh, some people had. From the community had questions about, um. Accountability of the schools and things like that, um. A lot of good information. Then, next week, I, I got quite a few meetings going on, so. Um, Monday, we got the planning and zoning hearing, but. From there, I got two other things, but I'll talk about them next week.
So the only thing on my list that hasn't been discussed so far is Thursday afternoon, we had. Uh, that landowner meeting with Drain one twenty-nine up in Lakota, um. I thought it went fairly well, there was not. Quite as much discussion and like input from the landowners during the meeting as I would have liked, but. I visited with some after the meeting, I think they were just shy and quiet, kind of like. All the other meetings we have, everyone who's supportive of it is usually quiet, um. But the big takeaway for me there was, there was not anyone that was opposed, everyone understood the tile was in poor condition. And it was, uh. Gathering information discussion as far as what to proceed for the engineers. On our side, the staff for Fairbault County and their attorney on their side, um. There, uh, there's several things that were discussed there, but it was a good meeting, we're gonna work on stuff and keep moving forward, so.
Good, I heard about it.
Good. Positive feedback?
Most of it, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't hear anything negative, you know, they just had questions.
Yep, yep, that's good.
So. Most of it was, they wanted to know what the original report was, but it's that six, seven years ago.
Ten.
Ten, it's been a while.
In twelve, twenty twelve.
I remember it.
So it's, it's something, and that was discussed briefly, it's something like Tyler and Bolden can look at, but. We are past that timeframe that it's not an eligible survey and all that stuff anymore, they will still have to. Do their own work to verify that, but it still is. A piece of the discussion for knowledge base, I guess.
The biggest question I had is. If there wasn't any cover before on it going into Minnesota, how come there would be now, and I, I just. To my way of thinking, you're gonna have to move the tile.
So in their, in their presentation, that was one thing that was addressed fairly early by Fairbault County, um. It looked like there's about four to five feet in the ditch that the tile could go down, um. That is dependent on the typical water level in the ditch, obviously you can't go right to the bottom. As you and I both know, but the, the discussion there was, um. One of the landowners, I believe they're right along the ditch, they said that ditch is typically almost always empty or very low. So even, even in high water events, they said it, it doesn't stay high very long.
Which began.
Well, so that's, that's a benefit, so there is a potential to pick up significant cover from that, um. They can go through the engineering to figure out what other options are, but the recommendation from. The attorney from Minnesota was. To look at all the limiting factors for the project, whether, I mean. We've talked about half inch, three quarter, and one inch coefficients here for other projects, so he said. Put everything on the table, look at your limiting factors, say. If we could build whatever, this would be the first thing to stop it, and then find out what fits under that. And then once you do that, make sure you account all your limiting factors and say, these are even feasible options. And then you get into some of the costs of them and justification that way, but, um. Obviously, the ditch is a limiting factor, the ground cover's limiting, so there's. Multiple pieces of that equation.
Shell up for an improvement, so not just a repair.
So, yeah, um, the feedback I got from landowners was definitely looking at the. Improvement side of things, I think half inch is the most logical. You get to, even if it's physically possible, which I'm not sure if it is, that's up to the engineers, but even if it's physically possible. The regulation side of Minnesota for the three quarter and one inch coefficients is. Increasingly difficult from conversations with Fairbault County. So they said half inch was pretty much the drainage standard they go by anymore for any improvements. So I think that would be reasonable, but above that, I think our. Administrative headache to get something accomplished would get substantial, and. I guess the feedback I've gotten from landowners up there is a half inch, half inch coefficient on an improvement project would be. Significant, and they would be very satisfied with that, so.
The concern I had out of a couple people was that we're gonna spend a lot of money on engineering fees and that we're not gonna do anything in the end.
I, I don't think that'll be the case this time. And I'll, I'll work to make sure that it's not the case.
Well, last time Minnesota stopped us.
Well, I don't think that'll be the same this time.
Good.
So. But. I mean, we can't do it without engineers, so we don't, we don't really have an option there, but. Well, the follow-up I would say to that is, even if we don't do an improvement. A repair is mandatory on both sides of the border, so if a repair is done with. New pipe supplies and, um, we could deepen the pipe without changing the capacity and still have it be a repair. On both sides of the, both sides of the border. So, worst case scenario, the entire district could be repaired and. Landowners would still see an improvement from that, because the tile has deteriorated so far. They're not getting the drainage that they should have got, or should be getting, so. Something, something will be done in the end, it's a matter of to what extent, but something will be done this time.
Anything else? I didn't have anything last week, that was.
Not already mentioned.
Yeah, not, that hasn't been gone through, I went to the same meetings Josh did and. He did a good job of explaining it, so I don't have to do anything. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in the second to adjourn, any, all in favor, say aye. Votes? Where are you? Thanks for coming in.
That's why I. Someone actually, I want to ask someone on, for you, more than just for project, but here is my card.
Thank you.
And I've got a handout if anybody needs anything from the project, but otherwise.
You only got one L in your first name. You can, you shortened it up for a reason.
The first twenty odd years of my life, I went with two L's and then I finally looked at my birth certificate and it says Wilson. Huh, only one whale and Wilson.
So you changed it to just one, one L.
Also, it makes it more memorable. There's one I own of one other will with one L and I think that's well beaten, maybe. So like, yeah, if it was sticking in my eye, okay. Will with one L instead of Joe twelve.
Huh, I've never seen it spelled with one L before.
Um, and he sent me the.
Yep.
Plume stuff here right now, so I will forward that out to everyone. Tammy, do you want that too?
The plume study.
Tanner, could you send that on to, uh, Lindsay to. Board help.
Lindsay.
Tiles.
Yeah.
Miles. And she'll have that for the next meeting.
Yeah.
I'm just.
I'm gonna reach out.
Yep.
Yeah, have a good one.
Thank you.
Just gotta hold your breath for five, ten minutes.
I guess, five minutes and you should be able to like pass out.
Just to clarify, cause I, you guys approved entering into the agreement with Kissimmee Regional for the transfer patients, right?
Right, yeah.
That's what I had written down.
You approved the new.
Yeah.
A new one.
The agreement.
Continue for what, six months and then?
Yeah, and that's what I thought.
Are we going over anything on budget or?
There in case. There was some kind of miracle and we were able to.
There's no miracle?
There's no miracle. It has been signed now, so we are moving forward, so that's good, but. I, I just didn't wanna not be able to because it wasn't on the agenda, you know.
Oh, that's.
Right, you got that, so.
I will let you know today, tomorrow where we're at. Uh, and we, because I'm also have time to get it then.
Sounds good. It's raining.
Yeah, I don't think Carter will be back, I don't know, it's like that, but I don't think he'll be back.
We'll get her done.
Well, if he sees the weather that we're getting, he might not wanna come back, type of sense.
I don't know how you cannot see the weather, it's everywhere, everywhere you look, they're talking about.
Yeah.
Doing anything else, yeah.
Yeah, they, uh, they changed it and took it out for today and just.
It's tomorrow afternoon, though.
Well, it's supposed to start a little bit mid morning.
But, but they did change that a little bit now too. This morning, they had the warning starting at noon tomorrow, which I'm hoping it waits till then. So I can get the election trading done, otherwise my old ladies aren't gonna wanna come.
Oh, my phone says ninety AM tomorrow.
No, it can't.
No.
It's only fifty percent. It ramps up to eighty by noon.
Because they were already calling yesterday, you know, if I was gonna cancel.
What time does it start?
Nine.
We're saying, what is, say.
They'll have the window, the shade's open and they'll be staring out the window.
Was that?
Still saying five to six.
No, up to twelve.
Shows eight to twelve.
Eight to twelve for us?
Yeah.
For Algonquin, but the north half of the county is gonna be worse than that.
Fifteen to eighteen.
Yeah, I've seen fifteen to eighteen.
Maybe if we get eight to twelve in basketball.
There will be anything going on. Everybody will be.
There'll be a lot of snow getting moved, which is what.
Yeah, nature doesn't.
Cooperating with.
Other nature doesn't respect it.
He doesn't care.
I'll have to figure out who's gonna move my snow now.